Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the 1,227th Public Hearing and Regular Meeting of the Livonia City Planning Commission. I wish to inform all persons in our audience that for petitions on tonight's agenda, which involve a question of zoning, the Planning Commission will make a recommendation to City Council, and the City Council, after holding their own public hearing, will make the final determination as to whether a petition is approved or denied. The Planning Commission will hold the only public hearing on request for preliminary Platts and/or vacating petitions. The Commission's recommendation is forwarded to City Council for the final determination as to whether the petition is accepted or rejected. If a petition requesting a waiver of use or a site plan is denied tonight, the petitioner will have 10 days in which to appeal the decision in writing to City Council. Resolutions that are adopted by the City Planning Commission will become effective seven days after the date of adoption. The Planning Commission and professional staff have reviewed each of these petitions upon their filing. Staff has furnished the Commission with both approving and denying resolutions, which the Commission may or may not use depending on the outcome of the proceedings tonight. If our secretary is ready, please call a roll.
Mrs. Dinaro?
Here.
Mr. Bongero is absent. Mr. Long?
Here.
Mr. Droes?
Here.
Mr. Ventura?
Is here.
Karen Magna is here. Chairman Wolschow?
Is here. Thank you, Mr. Secretary. And also with us tonight, we have Jacob Uhazi, and we also have Stephanie Reese from our Planning Department. The format of the meeting, for folks who haven't been to one of our meetings before, is each of the agenda items that are on our agenda tonight will be read out by our secretary. Our planning staff will give background information about the petition to us. We'll then ask that the petitioner come forward so that we can ask questions of them. And then, anyone else in the audience that wishes to have an opportunity to speak for or against the petition will have an opportunity to come up after the petitioner. After all that, then we'll make our decision on the item. With that, we're going to begin with the Public Hearing section of our agenda, item number one.
Petition 2025-02-02-04, submitted by Emmett Contracting, requesting special waiver use approval under Section 5.02 of the Livonia Zoning Ordinance, as amended to construct a planned residential development consisting of two buildings with 58 senior independent apartments on the properties at 14821 and 14829 Farmington Road, located on the west side of Farmington Road between Five Mile Road and Linden in the northeast quarter of Section 21.
Thank you, Mr. Secretary. Mr. Uhazi?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman.
Good evening.
As mentioned, this petition is on the west side of Farmington Road between Five Mile and Linden. The current zoning consists of two adjoining vacant lots. The northern parcel is 4,000, or about 1.03 acres, with 75 feet of frontage along Farmington Road, and it has a depth of 595 feet along its northern property line. The southern parcel is .89 acres, with 66 feet along Farmington Road, and has a depth ranging from 588 feet to 584 feet. The combined site area is approximately 1.98 acres, with a total of 142 feet of frontage along Farmington Road, excuse me. Both parcels are currently zoned C1 local business. Section 5.02 states that planned residential developments are allowed an added degree of flexibility in the placement, bulk, and interrelationship of the building and uses, and the implementation of new design concepts to encourage more efficient use of land and public services through a unified planning approach, while at the same time maintaining the overall intensity of land use and density of population. The project extends the existing Aletha Apartments, which was approved in 2016. The original Aletha site is located northwest and consists of 10.31 acres, with seven multifamily residential buildings containing a total of 192 senior independent apartments and a one-story community office building. Bordering the site to the north is Luther Lane, a private drive that provides access to the Livonia Woods, nor, excuse me, Nursing Home and existing Aletha Apartments. Northeast is the Nursing Home and Aletha Apartments, which are zoned NM3. To the southwest, abutting the property, is the Silver Village Senior Housing Complex, which is zoned NM3 as well. And to the south is the Livonia Dermatology Plaza Office Complex, zoned C1. And east across Farmington Road is the Heritage Office Complex, zoned C1 as well. The site plan shows two multi-story apartment buildings with a total of 58 senior independent apartments. The eastern building plans show a three-story building with 18 units. Located to the east along Farmington Road is the smaller of the two buildings, measuring approximately 106 feet in width by 75 feet of depth, and an overall gross floor area of 23,031 square feet. The east building has three types of units labeled A, B, and C on the site plan. Every apartment would contain a living area, bathroom, kitchen, and master bedroom. Units would include an additional study room. Units A and B, unit styles A and B have one and a half baths, and C would have one full bath. Floor plans show that each level will have six units with a gross floor area of 7,639 square feet. First-floor units facing west show private entryways. The remaining units are accessible from a common entryway to the east and west elevations that show a central hallway. A balcony would be included with the center units above the ground floor. They're shown here on the screen. The west building is located at the rear of the property. The four-story building would have 40 units and is approximately 61.5 feet wide and 230 feet deep for a gross floor area of 52,112 square feet. The building has two unit styles identified on the floor plan as styles A and B. Every apartment unit would contain a living area, bathroom, kitchen, and master bedroom. A units would include an additional bedroom with two full baths, and B units would have the study room with one and a half baths. A lobby/mailroom and elevator shaft are shown on the first-floor main entryway facing south. The floor plans show the two lower levels with 10 A-style units on each floor. The upper level shows nine A-style units and one B-style unit on each level. Each floor measures 13,028 square feet, for a total of 52,112 square feet. A balcony would be included with each unit above the ground floor. First-floor units would most likely be equipped with patios, and an additional common patio is located in the northwest corner of the western building. In terms of architecture, each building would be similar in appearance and constructed out of the same exterior materials, mainly brick veneer. The east building shows a brick facade with bay windows made with cement board trim. Building domers are trimmed with cement board. The parapet height measures 48 feet and is made of a continuous metal coping. The private unit entries are covered by aluminum awning and stairs that have aluminum railings. The north-south elevations are mostly brick veneer with cement board shake siding running up the center of the building and on the top level, surrounding the third-story windows. The upper-level bay windows are covered by a standing seam metal roof. The gable roof is made of cement board patterns and smooth panels. The western building elevations show a mostly brick facade with bay windows made with cement board trim on both ends of the building. The upper level is cement board battens and smooth panels. Each unit has a balcony with aluminum railings. The parapet height measures 58 feet and 4 1/4 inch, and is made of a continuous metal coping. The gable roof is made of cement board battens and smooth panels. The roofs of both structures would be covered with ashful shingles. The main entry to the building is via a storefront door system. The plans do not show where the building's mechanical equipment, air conditioning units, or utility meters are located, but as discussed at the study session, each individual unit have access along the wall that will be covered by matching paint to blend into the facade. The development could be, or would be connected to Luther Lane via two drives, one from the north between the eastern building and the park open space, and a second 24-foot-wide drive from the west. Off-street parking is provided throughout the site, including a total of 58 carports and additional 29 uncovered parking spaces. Located in the front of the western building is room for 10 additional parallel parking spaces, and the site has four proposed ADA-accessible parking spaces. The site plan provides 1.5 parking spaces per unit above the number of spaces required in the zoning ordinance. The original phase of the Aletha, for reference, also has a ratio of 1.5 parking spaces per unit. A park-open space area measuring .15 acres is shown along the north property line between the buildings. The open space is bordered by seven carport parking spots to the west and eight carports to the south. An entry drive from Luther Lane borders the east side of the park. A five-foot-wide sidewalk is shown on the east and south sides of the park open space area. An interconnected network of pedestrian paths run along both buildings and around the open space area. The proposed path also connects the rear building patio northwest across Luther Lane to the original Aletha Apartments. Stormwater would be managed by an underground detention basin in the parking area between the eastern building and the park open area. The petition will need to provide stormwater and drainage treatment details to the Engineering Department before obtaining permits for the proposed development. The site plan also shows two dumpster enclosures, one for each building. The plans show the dumpster enclosures to be 10 feet by 12 feet masonry walls with a four-inch concrete cap. The brick finish would match the primary building colors, and a pair of painted steel double-door gates would allow access. A fully detailed landscaping plan is included, showing various plantings around the foundation of the east building and along the street frontage of Farmington Road. The zoning ordinance requires one deciduous or evergreen tree per linear foot of road frontage, and one ornamental tree per 100 linear feet, and eight shrubs per 40 linear feet. The site has 142 linear feet on Farmington Road. The landscape plan satisfies the frontage requirements. The landscape plan shows seven internal trees throughout the site and is 24.6% landscaped open area. The interior parking lot landscaping of 5% of parking area landscaping with a minimum of one tree per interior island also complies with the zoning ordinance's requirements. The landscape plan indicates the type, quantities, and size of plant materials. A note should be added to the plan indicating that sod would be added on all grass areas identified as lawn. The plan specifies that the landscaped areas will be irrigated by an automatic underground irrigation system. And there are no photometric plans or sign packages for the site provided with the petition. And with that, that's all I have, but I also have correspondence from other departments, if you're right.
Would you like to read the correspondence out now?
Yes.
Thank you.
From our Engineering Department, "In accordance with your request, the Engineering Division has reviewed the above-referenced petition. We have no objections to the proposed waiver use at this time, but would like to note the following items. One, the subject parcels are assigned to the addresses of 14821 and 14829 Farmington Road. Should additional addresses be needed, the owner will need to contact this department once approvals have been attained. The existing parcels currently have access to public sanitary sewer, storm water, and water main. The drawings do not provide any calculations for proposed flow from the development, so we cannot comment on impacts to the existing system at this time. The owner shall submit drawings to the department once site plan approval has been granted for a complete engineering review and permitting. Based on what has been provided, we have the following comments regarding the utilities. One, water main. The proposed water main will be dedicated as public and maintenance easements will be required. If the water main is to be private, backflow prevention devices at each connection will be required. Two, sanitary sewer maintenance will be private. Three, stormwater. Detention is shown as proposed on the submitted drawings, but no information is shown. Storm sewer will need to meet the Wayne County Storm Ordinance's requirements and may be subject to Wayne County review depending on the outlet location. Two, any disturbances within the Farmington Road right-of-way will require permits through the Wayne County Department of Public Service, including driveway approach and sidewalk removal and placement. Existing approaches along Farmington Road will be required to be removed, and the roadway curb will be replaced. Three, based on the drawings, cross-access agreements will need to be provided at the time of permitting for driveway connections to the privately-owned Luther Lane. Four, the parcels will be required to be combined through the Department of Assessing. Paperwork for all combinations shall be submitted once site plan approval has been granted. This is signed David Lear, Assistant City Engineer." From the Fire Marshal's Office, "The office has reviewed the site plan submitted in connection with the request to construct residential building on the property located at the above-referenced address. We have no objections to the proposal with the following stipulations. Install of a sprinkler system with a standpipe, and sprinkler system, smoke detectors, and carbon monoxide detectors to be monitored by a fire alarm per code. A further detailed plan review will take place when the Division receives an official plan set. Signed Brian Kukula, Fire Marshal." From the Police Department, "I have reviewed the plans in connection with this petition. I have no objections to the proposal." Signed Paul Walters, Sergeant. From our Inspection Department, "Pursuant to your request, the above-referenced petition has been reviewed. This department has no objections to this petition." Signed Jerome Hannah, Director of Inspection. From the Accounting Department, "I have reviewed the address connected with the above-noted petition. As there are no outstanding amounts receivable, I have no objections to the proposal." Signed Connie Kupla, Chief Accountant. And from the Treasurer's Office, "All taxes are current for this property." Signed Susan Nash, City Treasurer. And finally, I have from the Residential Appraiser, "Plans have been submitted by Emmett Contracting, requesting special waiver use approval to construct a planned residential development consisting of two buildings for 58 senior independent apartments. The buildings and parking comprise two parcels 081-99-0024-000, or 081-99-0025-000. The Department of Assessment recommends these parcels should be combined prior to the building permits being issued. Please direct any questions to the Assessor's Office or livonia.gov for this lot-split combination process. Signed Kathy Sterlet, Residential Appraiser." And that is all I have, Mr. Chairman.
All right. That was a lot of information. Thank you for reading all that out. Do we have any questions for our planning staff from any of the Commissioners? No questions? Okay. The petitioner is in our audience. If they'd like to come forward to our podium, we'll start with your name and address, sir.
Hello. My name's Brad Emmett. I'm the owner of Emmett Contracting and petitioner for this project here.
Good evening, Mr. Emmett. What would you like to tell us about your petition?
Well, it's been said already, but it's a continuation of the Aletha BFIPs Apartments that I've been a part of for the previous five or six years. I'm an owner there, one of them. And this is sort of a third phase. There was two phases in the initial 200 or so apartments there. It is, I guess, the genesis of the project for me was to come up, we are in the, pretty well rented out in the first two phases, but the people that come to us, that sit in the leasing office, we're passing up a certain amount of available tenants because we don't have two-bedroom apartments, pretty much. We have, pretty much, all 200 apartments or so are one-bedroom, one-bath. So, these are larger, we'll rent for a little bit more, but this parcel has been available. I've known the owner, and so that's why we're proposing. We think there's a demand for the apartment and the unit that we propose to offer here. And I think throughout this planning process, the Planning Department had several meetings, rapid-response meeting with the Commissioners and some of the board members regarding this, and it sort of morphed into what you see today with the two buildings, one fronting along Farmington Road to give sort of a, more of a streetscape presence, I suppose you'd call it, and then that's sort of indicative of what the city would like to see going forward with the, you know, sort of, the new city center proposals coming up with this property. So, we took, Robert, the architect, sitting here with me, we went back to the drawing board with those meetings, from those meetings, and came up with these elevations that are relatively traditional in look, you know, elevation and outside exterior. You know, I think we've got some very traditional elements in there. These are apartments for older people, so I think traditional elements, like lots of brick and some limestone elements like that are appropriate, right? They kind of like that, that's what they like about where we're at with the Aletha Apartments that we have now. So, we have a green space area, it's sort of central to the development, which I expect to get used quite a bit. We have some of the amenities, so to the tenant, they wouldn't know, you know, that this is to them just a third, they'll go into the leasing office, they'll get all the amenities of Aletha BFIPs Apartments, so we hope it's an asset to the community, and yeah, I'm pretty optimistic about its rentability and success as a project. As far as my experience, I was the general contractor for all 200 units and was there from day one. And Dave Phipps, my partner, who passed away somewhere in the middle of all that construction, but that was his family's property that we built all those apartments on, so sort of continuation with that. So, beyond that, I'm open to any comment or any question that anybody has.
All right. Well, thank you, Mr. Emmett. Let's see if we have some questions for you. Any questions for our petitioner? Ms. Dinaro?
Can you, can you tell me a little bit about the profile of the prospective tenants? Are they single, are they couples?
Well, I can tell you a lot about the ones we have now, yes. And by and large, that's who these are, I would guess, more married couples. So, this is a 55 and older, you know, developed community. Now, it doesn't really, you know, it's not a, it's not a home, or it's just apartments, but it's just age-restricted to 55 and older. And we have a lot of single women and single men in the first two phases, but it sort of precludes, when you have a husband and wife, they, you know, they may turn the extra bedroom that's available in this development into a study or a den, but it just, you need another space. So, I would expect that we will get a lot of, obviously, they have to be 55 or older to be there, and I think we would get a fair amount of couples. And with that, you know, there, a lot of them are grandparents, and we see a lot of kids at the pool, so they're sort of, in this 40-unit building, there is a sort of a common area birthday room, you could call it, on the second floor. So, I guess that's, I'd expect that to get a lot of use also.
Thank you. Can you also tell me about the time, like a timeline, if this were to get approved, when would you break ground? When would you expect to start renting these out?
So, this is one of probably six important steps to getting able to, to be able to do construction, and I would guess if those all go well, and I, we know what we're doing, we've been through this a bunch, so I would guess that August is probably is optimistic of a start date, and then, you know, what we start on, whether it's underground or building foundations right-of-way, that's depending on, yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Dinaro. Any other questions? Mr. Droes?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I have just a couple of small questions, and again, commend you for your efforts to, you know, work with the feedback that was given by Commission.
Sure.
It seems like you're really kind of leaning into some of the ideas we talked about with the frontage along Farmington. And one of the renderings I saw, and it may just be the rendering, but it looked like there's some benches. Are you kind of planning any permanent benching along Farmington? I don't mind it, I guess, wondering if that would be included.
So, we have, internal to Aletha Phase 1 and 2, we have four or five benches along the walking path in there. I would expect that, while not shown here, we would have another bench, at least one. And then, we have this sort of, I don't know, it's 80 by 80 or 100 by 100 open area that's in sort of the center of the site there. I would expect picnic tables, I would expect something that creates shade, whether it's a, you know, pergola or a gazebo-type thing. So, those are, we see a lot of residents walking. They like the loop. It's a good distance, so they walk throughout the development, go on Farmington Road. This will add to that loop distance, and yeah.
Yeah, it might even be nice to see, like, maybe a bike rack or two, if people would use bikes.
Sure. Yeah, yep, yep. I do see bikes, you know, there that people have and do ride, so.
Okay. And then, a couple of questions about the carports. I noticed, it looked, and it's not a big deal, but it looked like there was a variation between the Civil site plan and the Architecture Plan.
Correct.
Which one is the correct one?
So, I believe, we will probably, the Civil's the incorrect one. So, the Civil, I believe, that grouping of carports that are close to the 40-unit building will be located to the west.
Okay.
So, there's a group of parking spots further to the west of that building on the other end that's not quite right on the building. Handicap will be then right where those carports were shown.
Okay.
So, in other words, the, I don't know if the Architectural shows the carports on the very west, but looking, kind of sanity-checking it now, I would say that the carports will go on the way west group of spots of the 40-unit building. Handicap will be on the east group.
Okay. And kind of that middle parking area adjacent to the public's, like, the kind of the common ground space.
Yes.
One of them showed two carports, the other showed one.
Right, yeah.
Okay. And then, I guess the elevations of those, is that going to be as shown in the one rendering with, it almost looks like a, almost like a panel with some trim around it, or is that up for?
That's up for debate. So, we have carports, a lot of them now, we have one carport per apartment now, so we have them, they're sort of a hip roof with a peak in the middle. Living with those, I chose that, I like the way they look, but they slide snow and water right where the car, and then in March, it snow thaw, there's a big, you know, snowdrift right where the cars are trying to get out. It's a problem. I would propose that, well, that's similar, what's shown in the Civil, that cross-section of that. I would just have it be more of a blade, just a straight pitched, you know, away from the parking area. I think that's smarter design for how it gets used, yeah.
Okay. And then, I guess, would the building materials kind of mimic closer to what you have on the elevations, or would it be?
So, on the buildings or the carports?
The carports, yeah.
Yes, the buildings, the end caps, all of that will be similar to what we show in the submittal here with the window design on the, on the end of the carports. Also, advantage of that single mono-pitch sort of roof is that the side that the cars don't enter from, where the bumper is, that lowers the eve height, which controls the wind and the use, it just increases the usability of the, because that's one of the things. You have carports, but if they're tall, then all the snow blows underneath, and they don't do what they're supposed to.
Okay. And then, my last question, the, I think the three-story on Farmington has, looks almost like little limestone lintels over the, like, a couple of the?
Right, yep.
I was wondering if there's an opportunity on, maybe just a portion of, kind of, I'll call it the bumped-out area with the brick, to maybe bring that same detail into the four-story?
Oh, I see, I see.
Right now, it looks like it's just all brick.
What that means, yeah, so.
Just for consistency between the buildings.
So, we have those, yeah. We, oh, to a, to a roll-out?
I see. Okay, so, yeah, we have.
You want to speak to this?
I'll have to.
No, you don't.
Good evening. Robert Miller with M Architects. Yeah, we decided to change up the center portion of that, right, because we're trying to take this linear floor plan, which is an apartment building, right, and make it feel vertical, right, which was the challenge, as we talked about it during one of our meetings. And in doing that, we felt that we wanted to try to integrate more of the center amassing to it, so it felt more like, even though there's not this central entrance into the building like you would experience, that the feeling is there. So, that center portion, we changed that brick detailing from the cast stone to the soldier coursing, to try to give something a little bit more of a variation to that, so it wasn't so repetitive. It's a completely subjective thing, and if we're talking about hopefully getting approval and you want it to be cast stone, we will totally make it cast stone.
Nope. I'll stay in my lane, I'm the engineer. Thank you, I'm no further questions. Thank you, I'm no further questions.
Thank you for those questions. Is there any other questions for our petitioner, Mr. Ventura?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, just one. I noted in our write-up, it said that a balcony would be included with each unit above ground floor. First floor units would most likely be equipped with a patio. As I drive through the existing development, there are first floor patios.
Sure, yep, yep.
Is there any reason you wouldn't do that in this new?
Can't think of one, I can't think of one.
They look pretty well used, I mean, people were.
People love, yeah, the patios, and they liked their first four units for that reason, because there is a patio there. So, yeah, unless there's.
We're showing patios.
Yeah, I believe every one of these should get a patio, yeah. The only thing I was thinking is it gets closer to, it would be some grade reason, but I, I don't.
It's just not the ground floor that faces the parking lot in the three-story building.
Right.
Those don't have patios.
Okay, right.
The ones that face Farmington.
Farmington do, right, and they don't in the, on the.
But the ones that are the four-story building, they all do, even the ones that face the parking lot.
The parking lot, so there's.
And there's a landscape buffer between that patio and the actual sidewalk, so it's current.
So there's three apartments.
Make that clear again, I'm not.
There's three apartments in the, so the, there's patio, so the three-story building we're talking about, and on the, which the west-facing side, they don't have patios, those three apartments.
Yeah.
And it's to do with the entrance, the ramp going up is why I think that there's a great problem making a handicap compliant into the, into it, is that correct?
Yeah, so, right, on the three-story building that's along Farmington, the three units that face the parking lot don't have patios. The ones that face Farmington do, we're too constricted with the site plan to get that to work, because we elevated the buildings out of the ground about two feet to give that townhouse appearance rather than being at grade. Therefore, we needed to create a barrier-free access to those, and we do that by not creating a ramp, but sloping the sidewalk, because if we change that to a 1 to 20 slope as to 1 to 12, we don't have to do railings and all those things, so it takes away that ramp feeling, and has more of a smooth, consistent sidewalk elevation. So that ate up that space to try to create any exterior spaces for that, and then the bumpers for the front bumpers of the par, I'm sorry, of the parking spaces facing that portion of the building as well, but every other unit in the development has ground floor patios.
Great, good explanation, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Ventura. And we will note too, as you noted during the study plan, that there was no elevator in the three-story building.
I know that's been added.
That's been corrected, so.
It has, yes.
That was an excellent find.
Good catch, yeah.
Wasn't there an elevator?
Yeah, so it's very good that we caught that.
We'd have caught that in the build phase.
I'm sure.
Hopefully.
Yes, definitely, all right, good. Any other questions on this item? I don't see any other questions. Is there anyone in our audience wishing to speak to, for, or against this item? Sir? Anyone wishing to speak, feel free to come forward. Mr. Emmett, we'll just ask you to sit down for one second, we'll have you back up after. Good evening, sir.
Good evening. John Schaefer, resident, 25 years, address 1563 Brookfield Street, just across the road here.
Well, thank you for being here, Mr. Schaefer.
Thank you. No real objection to the project other than the height. Four-story apartments, I don't think really go in well. Three-story apartment right on Five Mile, mentioned green space, I didn't see a whole lot of green spacing on there, looked like whatever they could shoehorn in with three apartments in that area. Luther Lane goes back to Livonia Woods back there, I don't think that is currently being used, I don't know how that roadway intends to be used, if that's always going to be permanent or not. And then the other objection that I would have is if this is truly for senior apartments and you have a four-story apartment, if there is any sort of a fire, you're not allowed to use an elevator. So in my experience, as a rehab therapist, getting seniors down four stories when there's a need to evacuate is problematic. Typically, you do once a year training where anybody who's in a third or fourth floor has to demonstrate the capability of leaving that apartment, those routinely are not done. So going forward, keeping them nice for the next 25 years, how do they tend to keep them up? How do they keep the, keep the elevators in good working order? Is there only going to be one elevator per apartment? What happens when that elevator breaks down? Then all of a sudden, you have a senior apartment, three, four stories high, then now we have to deal with getting the seniors in and out, getting water or food up to them, as you see on TV. So those are my concerns.
Okay, we appreciate you expressing those, thank you. And anyone else in our audience, feel free to come up? Good evening, ma'am.
Good evening. I'm Patricia Stepanoff, I live on Alpine Drive in Livonia. I kind of, I have a question about, just a couple of questions, but one in particular is the cost to the people that will live in these apartments, is this, is this considered a high-income, middle-income, or low-income housing?
We'll try to get an answer for you, I can't answer these questions immediately, but we'll, once everybody's commented, we'll try to get some of these questions answered for you.
Okay. And another question, not pertaining to the apartments, if that's okay, is I, I looked at the plan and it was really, it was quite small, it was really kind of hard to read just because of what I had, and I really didn't see, you know, the whole concept of having all these restaurants and shops and such, I really didn't see any additional parking for people that would come to patronize these businesses.
There are, this, this is strictly an apartment complex of residential housing, there's not going to be any shops.
Okay, so that's not the topic?
Yeah, there's not going to be any restaurants or shops, that's.
It's a different, but it's going to be in that same area, correct?
Yeah, you're thinking of the entire city center redevelopment, that's, that's a whole other project.
Okay.
In itself, yeah.
Okay, that's a question for some other individuals.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for coming. Anyone else wishing to speak on this item? No one else coming forward? Mr. Emmett, is there anything that you would like to say before we make our decision? You heard a couple comments and points made, is there?
Just to, to address, somewhat address the gentleman's concern, so we, we, most of the apartment buildings are four-story that are over at Alitha right now. We don't, people have to be self-sufficient, first of all, to be there, and that is one of the tougher things about what we do is, but making sure that people remain self-sufficient while they're there, that's a task there. We don't have medical services for folks, so, so that's sort of a job that we take on that this, that people are able to get in and out of the building. I do know, just in the, in the way of the elevator, the elevators generate or backup, so there is, so elevators do break, is anything, you know, machinery-wise, but we have quick service, we have all, you know, quick service elevator contracts with, and then in, in the event of a power outage, which is actually the bigger problem, we, all of our generator, or all of our buildings, these new proposed buildings will also be generator backup, so they will operate the elevators as if nothing happened in the event of a power outage, and that, that's happened, and, and those are prolonged periods of time, not just an afternoon when an elevator's down. So we think that takes care of most of the problem, not all of it, and then one thing I'd say is our submittal doesn't do a real good job of showing the open space there, but Luther Lane is in a, we, at Alitha Apartments Phase, the first two phases do own Luther Lane as part of it, and it will remain and be maintained by this development. And we repaved it as part of the construction, so it's, it's in real good shape now. A lot of the tree canopies, almost all the trees that are there are on the Luther Lane parcel and will remain, so, anyway, that's.
Right, access to the Livonia Woods facility will still.
It'll remain, yeah, yeah, yep, they have an easement for that on Luther Lane on our, on land that we own, so.
Okay, and then as far as cost goes, do you have an idea?
Yeah, I don't know how to answer that exactly, I mean, our average rent there is about $1,500, that's currently, these aim to be in the $1,850 a month range. I don't know if that's upper level or lower level, or what level that puts them, but yeah, it's, they're not subsidized in any way, so it's not subsidized housing in any way, so.
Yeah, this is a private complex with no subsidy.
That's right.
It's not low-income or any of that kind of stuff, okay?
That's correct.
All right, good.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Mr. Caremagni?
Sir?
Mr., Ms. Emmett?
I've got another question for you, who oversees and manages these properties?
So it's, it's an in-house manager, Jen Haynes is her name, and she's known well down here, and she, she works well with the city, we do, and, yeah, Jennifer Haynes is the manager, and I'm the number two behind her.
Okay, so you're, you're, the, the ownership of the, of the property manages it, it's been that way since day one?
Day one, yep.
Okay, and you oversee the lawn cutting, the maintenance of the building and everything from A to Z, huh?
Oh, yes.
Okay, very good, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. If there's no further questions, I'm going to close the public hearing, and a motion is in order.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Caremagni.
I'll make the approval resolution. At the request to construct a planned residential development consisting of two buildings with 58 senior independent apartments on properties 14821 and 14829, Farmington is hereby approved, subject to the City Council approval and following conditions. Number one, that the site plan marked Sheet 1 dated February 10, 2025, as revised, prepared by RP Donan Inc., is hereby approved and shall be adhered to. Number two, that the landscape plans marked L1 dated February 14, 2025, as revised, prepared by Verdi Landscape Architecture are hereby approved and shall be adhered to. Number three, that all electric and gas meters and any other exposed utility services or meter boxes shall be properly screened with deciduous-type landscape material, subject to the approval of Planning and Inspection Departments. Number four, that all disturbed lawn areas except for the detention basins shall be sodded in lieu of hydroseeding. Number five, that underground sprinklers are to be provided, for all landscaped and sodded areas and all planted materials shall be installed to the satisfaction of the inspection department and therefore thereafter permanently maintained in healthy condition. Number six, that the elevation plans of list, and list of building materials as received by the Planning Commission on February 14, 2025 are hereby approved and shall be adhered to. Number seven, that the three walls of the trash dumpster areas shall be constructed out of building materials that shall complement that of the buildings, and the enclosure gates shall be made of solid panel steel construction or durable, long-lasting solid fiberglass and maintained when not in use and closed at all times. Number eight, that this site shall meet the Wayne County Stormwater Management Ordinance and shall secure any required permits, including stormwater management permits and soil erosion and sedimentation control permits from Wayne County. Number nine, that all light fixtures shall not exceed 20 feet in height and shall be aimed and shielded so as to minimize stray light trespassing across property lines and glaring into the adjacent roadway. Number 10, that only conforming signage is approved with this petition, and any additional signage shall be separately submitted for review and approval by the Zoning Board of Appeals. Number 11, that the specific plans referenced in this approving the resolution shall be submitted to the Inspection Department at the time the building permits are applied for. And 12, pursuant to Section 13.13 of the Livonia Zoning Ordinance as amended, this approval is valid for a period of one year only from the date of approval by City Council, and unless a building permit is obtained, this approval shall be null and void at the expiration of said period.
Is there support?
I'll second it.
We have support from Ms. Danaro, Mr. Ventura?
I'd like to ask the petitioner, or the approver, the maker of the approval, to amend it to include the fact that all of the first-floor apartments in both buildings will have patios, with the exception of the three west-facing apartments on the first floor in, in the easternmost building.
I'm good with that.
Maker's support is okay?
Yeah, I'm good with that.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Ventura. Mr. Uhazie, do we need to update the dates on the site plan, given that we had some revisions made between?
The site plan has remained the same, it was the floor plans that were changed, yeah.
Okay, and those aren't referenced in the approving resolution?
Right.
Okay. All right, thank you, just wanted to make sure that we have all our dates correct. Is there any discussion on the motion? This is a motion to approve. Mr. Chair. Mr. Drows?
I'd also like to request to potentially add an amendment to Mr. Caremagni's motion, that the, the carports are inconsistent with the architectural site plan dated March 14, 2025, and that the carports themselves will be built with materials similar in nature to the approved building facades, with, I guess, the opinion of that being deferred to the Planning Department.
Okay.
Is that, is that in line with your conversation back and forth earlier?
Yes.
Okay, yes, I'm good with that.
Okay, we're memorializing that, so we want complimentary materials on the carport to the building?
I'm good with that as well.
And the supporters.
I'm okay with that, yep.
Excellent, all right, is there any other comments? All right, if there's no other comments or questions, we will take a vote on an approving resolution by Mr. Caremagni and Ms. Danaro.
Caremagni votes yes, Mrs. Danaro?
Yes.
Mr. Long?
Aye.
Mr. Drows?
Yes.
Mr. Ventura?
Aye.
Chairman Willschau?
Votes aye, motion passes, we'll go to City Council on approving your recommendation, good luck on your project. And now we have item number two on the public hearing agenda.
Item number two is Petition 2025-02-02-05, submitted by Symmetry Management, requesting waiver use approval under Section 3.11 and 6.51 of the Livonia Zoning Ordinance, as amended, to construct a 2,515-square-foot full-service restaurant with drive-through facilities at 39200 Seven Mile Road, located in the, at the northwest corner of Seven Mile and Hagerty Roads in the southwest quarter of Section 6.
Thank you, Mr. Secretary, and Mr. Uhazie.
Thank you. This would be for a Kava drive-through restaurant, located in the northwest corner of Seven Mile Road and Chipwad Drive, just west of the I-275 exit ramp. The existing zoning is C2 general business. West of the property is the Shake Shack Full Service Restaurant with drive-through window, zoned C2. Across Chipwad Drive is the historical Orson Everett House, zoned C1. South across Seven Mile is the Schoolcraft College Campus, zoned PL. And north of the property is the Pentagon Entertainment Campus and parking lots for J. Alexander's Restaurant, AMC Theaters, and Hyatt Place Hotel, all zoned C2. The plans show a 2,515-foot, square-foot building near the middle of the site. The building has proposed outdoor seating consisting of five tables and 18 chair, or 18 seats under a canopy, and the site plan, or the plans show the building to be 19.5 feet in height, complying with the ordinance. The ordinance requires a building in the C2 district to have a maximum height of 35 feet, which as I mentioned, is, the proposed building is in compliance. In C2 districts, the minimum required front yard setback for a building is 15 feet, the proposed structure is approximately 66 feet from Seven Mile Road, and the minimum required rear yard setback is eight feet, the proposed building would be approximately 101 feet from the northern property line. The minimum side yard setback from Chipwad Drive is eight feet, and the building would be 84 feet from Chipwad Drive. The proposed building complies with all minimum required setbacks. Access to the site would be from the existing right-in, right-out driveway off of Seven Mile Road. The site is also accessible from Hagerty Road via shared access with the Shake Shack The single traffic lane serving the drive-up window would run along the east side of the proposed building. To access the drive-through lane, vehicles would enter the site using the south driveway along Seven Mile, turn right into the parking lot area to the east, and then enter the stacking lane for the window to the north. Alternatively, cars could enter the west via shared access with the Shake Shack parking lot. Vehicles would have to yield to traffic, turn left into the parking area to the east, and then enter the stacking lane for the window to the north. Drive-through lanes must provide sufficient vehicle waiting or stacking spaces, including the space at the pickup window, the service lane required to be, with a service lane required to be at least 10 feet. Drive-through establishments must also provide bypass lane for vehicles that wish to circumvent the nut, the drive-in window. The proposed width of the one-way aisle along the north side of the building would measure 20 feet, providing ample space for both the drive-up and bypass lanes. Parking for restaurants with drive-up window facilities is one space for every 125 square feet of floor area, plus one space for every three outdoor patio seats, plus one space per employee. The number of outdoor seats, 18, and the number of employees, 14, for a total of 30 required parking spaces. The site plan shows 36 parking spaces, which is six more than required. Two of these spaces would be ADA accessible and are provided adjacent to the entrance to the southeast of the building. There are also eight proposed drive-through pole-ahead spaces and bollards on the west of the building and a 24-foot aisleway. The plan shows a total of 44 indoor seats. The plan shows a total of forty-four indoor seats. Uh, the landscaping plan shows twelve existing frontage trees along Chipwah Drive and Seven Mile Road, which would remain. The ordinance requires the two-hundred-feet of frontage on Seven Mile Road to have five full-sized trees, two ornamental trees, and forty shrubs. The ordinance also requires the two-hundred-and-eighteen feet of frontage on Chipwah Drive to have five full trees, uh, full-sized trees, two ornamental trees, and forty-four shrubs. There are also seven evergreen shrubs around the transformer pad northeast of the building and three evergreen trees screening the dumpster enclosure. The plan proposes two ornamental trees and eighty-four shrubs. Fronted trees comply with the zoning ordinance. The ordinance also requires landscaping of five percent of the parking area. The plan shows one-thousand-two-hundred-and-fifty-three square feet or six-point-four percent. The ordinance also requires one tree per three-hundred linear, or square feet of landscaping, which would equate to three trees. The plan shows two existing trees and one proposed tree in compliance with the ordinance. The existing woods and wetland area to the north will not be impacted, complying with all open space landscape requirements. All right-of-way and easement landscaping will comply with the ordinance as all entrances have existing landscaping. The proposed building facade consists mainly of EFS materials, including, uh, except for the last two feet, eight inches, which uh, was replaced by what appears to be a stone veneer. Uh, the finish is identified as muhav, muhavi and uh, the remaining facade is a limestone color. The exterior canopy, vertical slats, and privacy screening are shown on the elevation plans to be constructed from a cedar wood. The outdoor seating area would be enclosed by an exterior screen wall made of masonry breeze block. A new elevation plan was submitted from our last meeting that shows the cedar truss would be extended across the south-facing wall. The dumpster enclosure is in the site's northeast corner behind the building and can be, and can be seen from the street. The plan shows the dumpster enclosure to be constructed of concrete with a brick finish. The brick veneer finish would match the primary building colors. Uh, the site's stormwater runoff would be detained underground. Due to the existing easement hindering the development of the proposed restaurant, the underground stormwater system will be altered along the south of the building. The petition must provide, the petitioner must provide details of drainage and stormwater treatment to the Engineering Department before obtaining any building permits. A photometric plan uh, was submitted uh, with several areas that do not comply with the zoning ordinance uh, foot candles. The ordinance discourages the adverse effects of inappropriate lighting. The light trespass from the property shall not exceed point-five-foot candles at the property line measured five feet from the ground. The lighting plan shows a maximum of point-two-foot candles at the property line. The height of the proposed light fixtures is listed as eighteen feet, eighteen-foot poles with a twenty-foot mounting height. All pole, all light poles should not exceed twenty feet. And for signage, the site will, would be allowed one ground sign not to exceed thirty square feet in area and six feet in height with a minimum setback of ten feet from any right-of-way. The plan shows an existing ground sign at the site's southwest corner of Seven Mile, along Seven Mile Road. And with that, Mr. Chairman, I have correspondence to read.
If you could, please.
From the Engineering Department, in accordance with your request, the Engineering Division has reviewed the above referenced petition. We have no objections to the proposed project at this time, but would like to note the following items. One, the subject parcel is assigned the address three-nine-two-zero-zero Seven Mile Road. Should additional addresses be needed, the owner will need to contact this department once approvals have been obtained. Two, the existing parcel is currently serviced by public sanitary sewer and water main as well as private stormwater. Developer, developer will need to submit full engineering drawings and calculations to the department for permitting once the approvals for the site have been received. Based on the submitted drawings, we have the following comments. One, sanitary sewer, the drawings do not include a basis for, of design for the proposed sanitary sewer, so we are unable to determine if capacity in the existing system is available. Once proposed sanitary sewer flows are provided, we will be able to determine impacts of the existing system. Also, after relocating the existing sanitary sewer as shown on the proposed drawings, the owner will need to provide easements over the path of the pipe for maintenance as it will be considered public. Two, stormwater, the drawing indicates a private system uh, draining to the existing wetland and open drain. Under the previous development to the west, a water quality structure was, was installed for both sites, so no additional water quality or detention will be required. The developer will need to obtain soil erosion and sediment control permit from the department due to the proximity to the existing wetlands. The proposed landscape plan indicates the planting of two honey locust trees on the site. We encourage the developer to choose different large or medium tree species from the approved list. With the proposed entrance off of Chipwah Drive, the existing tree to the south side of the drive will need to be removed due to the proximity to the proposed curb opening and site distance issues. Four, any disturbances with the Seven Mile right-of-way will require permits through Wayne County Department of Service, including driveway approaches and sidewalk removals and, and placements. This is signed, uh, Dave Lear, Assistant City Engineer. From the Fire Marshal's Office, the office has reviewed the plan submitted in connection with the request to construct a commercial building on the property at the above reference address. We have no objections to the proposal with the following stipulations per fire codes. Wits of and clear areas of roadways for emergency vehicles, water supply distances, fire hydrants. Uh, provide permits and official plan sets for kitchen cooking operations. A further detailed plan review will take place when the division, division receives an official plan set. Signed Brian Kukula, Fire Marshal. From the Police Department, uh, I have reviewed the plans in connection with this petition. I have no objections to the proposal. This is signed Paul Walters, Sergeant with the Traffic Bureau. From our Inspection Department, pursuant to, pursuant to your request, the above referenced petition has been received. One, the proposed plans show EFS installed at ground level. Planning and/or council may wish to address this as it is sus- uh, susceptible to moisture damage and physical damage. A more durable product should be installed closer to the grade. The gates on the dumpster, two, the gates on the dumpster enclosure shall be steel. Three, signage must confirm to the sign ordinance or a variance from the zoning board of appeals would be required. This department has no further objections to this petition. Signed Jerome Hannah, Director of Inspection. From the Accounting Office, I have reviewed the address connected with the above noted petition. As there are no outstanding amounts receivable, I have no objections to the proposal. Signed Connie Kupola, Chief Accountant. From the Treasurer's Office, uh, all taxes are current on this property. Signed Susan Nash, Livonia Treasurer. And with that, Mr. Chairman, uh, that is all.
All right, thank you, Mr. Yuhasi. Is there any questions for planning staff? Mr. Dros?
Mr. Chair, thank you. Um, Mr. Yuhasi, one question about what I'm looking at on the screen versus in the packet. Um, I know there was some discussion at our last um, study session about cross-access to Chipwah. Um, did they in fact get that approved, that they can now connect to it?
Uh, I have not heard any updates. That's a question for the petitioner.
Okay. Um, that was my question, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Dros. Any other questions for staff? If not, oh, Mr. Ventura?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, Mr. Yuhasi, uh, at our study session, we talked about the fact that our write-up called for or identified the entrance from Seven Mile Road as being limited to right-in, right-out. And there was some question as to whether or not that in fact had been approved that way when the Shake Shack was approved. Have determined that that is the case?
Uh, we've not been able to determine that yet.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Ventura. Any other questions for staff? Mr. Uh, Mr. Dros?
Sorry, Mr. Chair. Um, you, you mentioned, Mr. Yuhasi, in your presentation that the cedar detailing was extended on the facade um, along the Seven Mile frontage. Is that information available or maybe the applicant might have that?
Uh, well, it is shown in this, at this elevation.
Okay.
It's not on the, not on the renderings, though.
Okay.
I can zoom in if it is helpful.
Have to use a little bit of imagination.
Right.
Okay, thank you. All right, all set, Mr. Dros?
I'm good.
Very good. Uh, any other questions for staff?
No, uh, Mr. Chairman, I'm going to circle back now. Question of the elevation.
Ping pong.
And our write-up, it, it's, I'm a little confused here. Help me out. The write-up talks about um, the lower portion of the exterior of the building.
The original write-up, the original plans did have EFS go all the way down to the um, to the ground level.
Okay.
Uh, that's why the Inspection Department also noted that the EFS goes all the way down. Um, we, we received revised plans um, that have like a stone veneer uh, along the last two feet, eight inches, uh, replacing that EFS along the bottom. But the original.
So that, so the masonry is going to be as shown on the elevation in our package and not as described?
Yes, that was, that was written before the updated uh, elevation plans.
And at our, at our study session, we asked that additional masonry be added to the elevation of the building. Has that happened anywhere?
No, this is all we've received as far, as far as updated elevations.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Ventura. Mr. Dros, you're okay? All right. Break clean, all right. Uh, if, if there's no other questions for planning staff, we'll go to our petitioner. Good evening, sir.
Good evening, Frank Jarboe for Symmetry Management. Um, this is a, a Cava deal that new fast schedule that's coming to town, this would mark, if graciously approved, it would be the sixth store. The first three, one is in downtown Detroit, second would be in Canton, third is in Novi. Uh, we are working one on a Fortune, fourteen Orchard Lake and then we're working one on Hall Road. This would be the sixth one here. So, um, they're very excited to come to the market, a good brand. We've done all of their work so far. Um, you know, a, as you can see, and I know that a couple of different things I want to point out is Mr. Ventura talked about. The, the stone at the bottom and what we, what uh, the applicant, this is basically corporate-driven. They like the modern look. I'm, I'm sure we can work out something if there's some additional stone that needs to happen. I, I, I kind of agree with you a little bit, Mr. Ventura, on that too as well. One of, a couple of other notes I'd like to make is this isn't a typical uh, drive-through window. Um, you, there is no menu board. Uh, you can, you know, you can only place orders online and then you would drive up and pick them up, so um, not a typical drive-through window as you would see on other fast schedules. Um, in, 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 write-up two, in, if, in the civil drawings, it talked about removing one of the trees for the access road to Chipwah. We are very diligently working on getting that access to Chipwah. Um, I think we've made a little bit of headway this week, um, getting that. Um, I, you know, and then if we, in, in the fact that we do, I think we would lose three parking spots, which would still keep us in compliance with the development. But other than that, I'd love to answer any questions, any concerns.
Okay, very good. Yeah, you are overparked slightly, so you would be able to lose those for the drive access? Okay, very good. Uh, any questions for our petitioner? Mr. Dros?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Well, um, one question about the access. Would that, because I believe there's a cross-access easement for uh, the Steak Shack um, with that driveway, would they have access all the way um, to Chipwah Drive or would just be to the, the main access point of Seven Mile?
No, that would be a cross-access for both, uh, both restaurants, yes.
Okay.
Yep.
And then, um, I guess, relative to the, I guess, the traffic control concerns about Seven Mile, um, is that something that there could be signage to direct people that, you know, may want to use Seven Mile to, to pass through? Because I don't think, know if it would be intuitive for people at the Steak Shack necessarily to continue east.
Yeah, we would definitely put up new signage too and to Mr. Ventura's point about the right-in, right-out on Seven Mile, that's something that we talked about in the planning session that we would more than happy to try to put some, maybe eat, put it right in the middle of the island. If they want to drive over it, go for it, you know?
Thank you.
Excellent, thank you, Mr. Dros. Uh, any other questions for our petitioner?
Yeah, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Care Magna.
Sir, I see the, I see the, the rubbish dumpster, it looks like it's about eighteen, a little over eighteen feet wide and you're going to put two dumpsters in there? Do you, do you need that type of uh, capacity?
Yeah, most, most likely what the, they would probably do is one for recycle and one for rubbish.
Okay, and in that, in that case, it looks narrow to have two dumpsters in there and allow for the truck to get in there to service properly. You're talking about eighteen feet wide, uh, you're, you're not, not allowing for any room there. And if you look at it on the drawing here, when you, when you have to service that, there's an island that's just to the south of there that's going to interfere with any straight shot in them dumpsters. Can you blow, can you blow that up, Jacob?
Yes.
See that island right there, just to the south?
Yes.
So that's going to be a, that's going to be a bad situation. They'll be on your grass or whatever you've got planted there all the time. So either that thing needs to be clocked a little bit to get a lot of straight shot and perhaps made a little wider or you're going to wind up having gate damage and all kinds of trouble there.
We'll definitely take a look at that. I definitely, I mean, we normally put a truck radius on it. I haven't seen the plan with the truck radius and uh, we'll definitely take a look at that.
Yeah, I guess, I got some experience with this and that, that does not appear to have enough room to, 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 to avoid doing damage, I'll tell you that.
Well, yeah, we'll definitely take a look at that.
Okay.
Appreciate that, thank you. You're definitely looking at an expert in that, that field.
Yeah, I, I, I know that.
All right, uh, any other questions for our petitioner? No other questions for our petitioner? Uh, is there anyone in the audience wishing to speak for or against this petition? No one jumping up? Anything else you'd like to tell us before we make our decision?
Uh, no, that, uh, we're, we're not new to the, to the community. We've known, we, we were the, uh, we did the development on Middleburg in Plymouth with the Ghost Grocer that's yet to take occupancy. Um, you know, I like to say that publicly because I can't say their name publicly, so um, we're not new to the community. We've done this time and time again. We're also the developers, actually the general contractor that built the Aldi locally, so.
All right, very good. Well, thank you for coming tonight and working with us on this item. We'll see what the, what the decision is here.
Thank you.
Uh, if there's no other comments or questions, I'll close the public hearing and a motion is in order.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Dros?
I'd like to offer a approving resolution. Uh, I'd like to request the waiver use to construct a two-thousand-five-hundred-and-fifteen-square-foot full-service restaurant with drive-through facilities at three-nine-two-zero-zero Seven Mile Road is hereby approved for the following reasons, subject to City Council approval and the following conditions. That the site plan identified as Sheet Number C-dash-two, prepared by Stonefield Engineering and Design dated February fourteen, two thousand twenty-five, is hereby approved and shall be adhered to. That the landscape plan is identified as Sheet Number C-dash-seven and the landscape notes and detail plan identified as Sheet Number C-dash-eight, prepared by Stonefield Engineering and Design dated February fourteen, two thousand twenty-five, is hereby approved and shall be adhered to. This waiver use is granted to this petitioner only and any new users of such property are required to seek and receive City Council's consent to such users operating the subject facility prior to occupancy by such user. That the subject site has the capacity to accommodate the proposed use. The appropriate recordable legal instrumentation such as cross-parking agreement that gives notice and outlines the terms of how to, the subject par, property would share par, prop, excuse me, share parking and access to be supplied to the city. That walls of the dumpster enclosure shall be constructed out of the same brick used in the construction of the building and when not in use, be closed at all times. That the, uh, that this approval is subject to the petitioner being granted a variance from the Zoning Board of Appeals for excess signage and any conditions related thereto. That items specified in the correspondence dated March third, two thousand twenty-five from the Department of Public Works shall be resolved to the department's satisfaction. That the items specified in the correspondence dated March sixth, two thousand twenty-five from the Inspections Department shall be resolved to the department's satisfaction. That a trash receptacle shall be provided for the outdoor patio area and be emptied regularly as needed. That a green space buffer shall be planted around the outdoor patio. That the hours of operation of the internal restaurant and drive-up window shall be limited no later than midnight on Sun, Sunday through Thursday and no later than two AM on Friday and Saturday. That the specified plans referenced in the approving resolution shall be submitted to the Inspection Department at the time the building permits are applied for. And pursuant to Section 19 dot 10 of Ordinance Number 543, the zoning ordinance of the City of Livonia, this approval is valid for a period of one year from the date of approval by the City Council, and unless a building permit is obtained and construction is commenced, this approval shall be null and void at the expiration of said period.
Is there support?
Well, support.
Mr. Chair.
All right, we, Mr. Yuhasi?
Sorry to interrupt, but I would make one comment of the number 11, the green space buffer around the patio is something I know we discussed at the study session. I would recommend maybe changing that to the Satisfaction of Planning Department if you guys don't want to hash that out here. So something that we can work with before they go to council.
Is the maker okay with that?
Okay with that.
The support's okay with that?
Support's fine. Support would also ask the maker of the resolution to amend it to include two provisions. Number one, that the percentage of masonry on the exterior of the building be increased to the satisfaction of the Planning Department, in discretion of the Planning Department. And number two, to direct the Planning Department to determine finally, prior to this petition going to the City Council, whether or not that entrance from Seven Mile Road is restricted to right-in, right-out. And if it is, that it be signed to show, no left, or right turn only, and that the, I don't know what you call that, structure that defines the drives, but that it be made more difficult for cars to drive over the top of that thing.
Like curbing?
Yeah, increase the size of the curbs, yeah.
Okay. That's a good point.
And if, Mr. Dros is fine with that?
I am, yes.
Mr. Dros, okay? All right. One other thing, Mr. Long?
Since we're beating up the resolution. Jacob, in the study session, we talked a lot about not wanting the drive-through lane in this usage to travel with any new user, and I do see we have something in here, number three, that says that, you know, any new user is required to seek City Council's consent. Does that cover, is that sufficient enough to cover the drive-through use? Because that's kind of, you know, they have a unique system where it's all online.
It would force whoever the next user is to come to approval for City Council, so they wouldn't be able to operate anything.
Okay.
You can change it if you want to specifically speak to the, or the board, but anything that would be, they wouldn't just be able to put in like a McDonald's with a drive-through menu board without coming in for City Council approval.
Okay, if staff's comfortable with it, I am. I don't know about the rest of the commission, but I can get comfortable as long as staff is. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
All right, thank you, Mr. Long. Any other comments or questions? I will say that the maker of the motion, would there like to be an additional, any verbiage regarding the dumpster enclosure as referenced by Mr. Caremagna in terms of size and orientation?
I would be willing to, yeah, if, and you talked about rotating it to improve maneuverability of the site.
I guess I'd leave that to Planning and the petitioner, just make sure you got the proper space there, so it doesn't lead to problems going forward.
Okay, you're all right with?
Absolutely.
Mr. Yuhasi, you understand?
Yes, that specific.
The intent, okay. And Mr. Ventura, you're okay with that as well?
With that?
All right. Any other questions or comments on this motion? If not, we have a motion to approve made by Mr. Dros, supported by Mr. Ventura with a few amendments. If the secretary's ready, please call the roll.
Mr. Dros?
Yes?
Mr. Ventura?
Aye.
And Mrs. Denal?
Yes.
Mr. Long?
Aye.
Caremagna votes aye. Chair Wilshaw?
Votes aye. Motion passes, and we'll go on to City Council with an approving recommendation. Good luck with your project, sir. Thank you for coming tonight. This now includes the public hearing section of the agenda. We move on to the miscellaneous items, item number three.
Petition 2025 dash 02 dash 08 dash 01, submitted by Robertson Brothers Homes, requesting site plan approval under an amended consent judgment to construct a residential townhouse development consisting of 15 buildings and a total of 100 dwelling units on the property 37640 Seven Mile Road and 19290 Victor Parkway, located on the north side of Seven Mile Road between Victor Parkway and Newburgh Road in the southeast quarter of Section 26.
Thank you, Mr. Secretary. We're moving a little bit east to where we just were, Mr. Yuhasi?
Yes. So this is, the subject site is, consists of two parcels that total 10.18 acres and currently sit vacant, located at the corner of Seven Mile and Victor Parkway. The subject parcels are zoned RUF, but the site has a long legal history that includes a consent judgment with several amendments. And multi-story housing on this site is allowed under the consented judgment, which was approved by City Council on December 13, 2023. The site also qualifies as a brownfield due to arsenic and selenium found there. Moreover, test borings throughout the site reveal significant areas of organic peat and other poor soils. The submitted site plan, plans are consistent with the conceptual plans approved in the amended consent judgment. The number of units per building ranges from four to eight. The buildings are arranged around and within an internal private road system and generally arranged in a figure-eight pattern. A single drive from Victor Parkway would serve the development at a point roughly 250 feet north of Seven Mile Road. Following best access management practices, the proposed site driveway is aligned with an opening in the median opposite the existing STM microelectronics driveway on the west of Victor Parkway. The buildings along the perimeter have their fronts facing Seven Mile Road to the south, Victor Parkway to the west, and the drainage course to the north, with the stormwater detention pond to the east. As authorized in the amended consent judgment, building number 11 at the property's southwest corner is approximately eight feet from the right-of-way of both Seven Mile Road and Victor Parkway. In the southeast corner, building number six is shown 15 feet from the right-of-way of Seven Mile, and the minimum spacing between buildings would be 15 feet. This complies with the amended consent judgment. Parking of the site is located between the rear of the buildings, which is 48 feet, sufficient for both 20, or for 24, excuse me, sufficient for 24-foot-wide two-way drive aisles and perpendicular parking on one side, but not both. Including the garages, total parking is 234, equal to 2.34 spaces per unit. Additional parking is shown in other areas, including along Horizon Way between building number 13 and 15 and Lester Drive between buildings number 7, 9, 10, and 14. Sidewalks are provided throughout the site. The network of walks is interconnected between the fronts of the buildings, including the courtyard, along the major roads, and extending north across the drainage within what is labeled as the Northern Park amenity. The area north of the drainage course was recently acquired and comprises approximately 3.79 acres, all of which would remain undeveloped. The landscape plan shows a passive recreational amenity, including an unpaved aggregate walking path, seating, and natural landscaping plants. Stormwater from the development would be directed into an open detention basin in the site's southeast corner adjacent to Seven Mile Road. The basin's location is logically based on the site's topography and the fact that it is at the downstream end of the drainage course. It roughly measures 18,530 square feet in surface area. The basin would be maintained with seed mix of native grasses and intended to be left natural instead of manicured. Landscaping plans show compliance with Section 10.03 regarding minimum frontage landscaping, parking lot landscaping, green belt buffering, and open landscaping requirements. The plant schedule identifies 11 different species, including a mix of deciduous and evergreen trees. One note from engineering is to request to remove pine trees in the east roadway, right-of-way, and diversify the species listed from just maples. The townhomes include 65 two-bedroom and 35 three-bedroom units for 100 apartment dwellings. The overall density drops to 9.82 dwelling units per acre, which qualifies the site under a medium-density residential land use classification. As a comparison, the density of the recently approved townhomes apartment development at Seven Mile and Farmington Roads is 14.97 dwelling units per acre. Building lot coverage for 100 West is listed at 14%. There are two primary unit types listed, a two-bedroom apartment called the Davenport and a three-bedroom unit called the Shearwood. Both models will have three levels. The three-bedroom units are 20 feet wide and offer a two-car garage, whereas the two-bedroom units are 16 feet wide and provide only one-car garage. Regarding floor area, the three-bedroom units would contain 1,644 square feet of living space, and the two-bedroom apartments would contain 1,327 square feet. The ground floor of the units contains the garage, utility closet, flex room, and foyer. A staircase from the ground floor provides access to the second floor, which contains the living room, kitchen, dining, pantry, closet, and powder room. The second level measures 680 square feet on the three-bedroom unit and 548 square feet on the two-bedroom unit. Every apartment would have a deck balcony supported by columns located off the living room, accessible by a door wall. The third floor includes the bedroom, laundry closet, and two full baths. The building height is approximately 29 feet from the finished grade to the eaves. The peaked roofs have a relatively shallow pitch. The primary exterior building materials are faced brick and hardy siding for the walls and ashwalt shingles for the roofs. Per the consent judgment, brick covers the lower level except for the door, window, and garage openings. It also covers the garage half of the second level on the end units and the insets between the units extending to the second level. Hardy siding covers the upper two floors to the rear of the building. It's also shown on the front side and side elevations along portions of the first and second levels of the buildings. And with that, Mr. Chair, I have correspondence I can read?
If you'd like to read that out, please.
From the Engineering Department, "In accordance with the request, the Engineering Division has reviewed the above-referenced petition. We have no objections to the proposed project at this time, but would like to note the following items: The subject parcels are assigned the addresses 37640 Seven Mile Road and 19290 Victor Parkway. Should additional addresses be needed, the owner will need to contact this department once approvals have been obtained. Two, the existing parcel is currently serviced by Public Sanitary Sewer, Stormwater, and Water Main. The developer will need to submit full engineering drawings and calculations to this department for permitting once approvals for the site plans have been received. Based on the submitted drawings, we have the following comments: One, sanitary sewer. The drawings do not include a basis of design for the proposed sanitary sewer. As we are unable to determine if the capacity of the existing system is available, once proposed sanitary sewer flows are provided, we will be able to determine impacts to the existing system. Also, since ownership of the project is continuing under one entity, the sanitary sewer system will remain private and not public as shown. Two, water main. The drawings indicate a public water main with a single feed from Victor Parkway. If the water main is going to be dedicated to the public, we would require a looped system to be fed from Seven Mile Road water main as well as from the proposed Victor Parkway connection. If the main was only one feed and is servicing a single property, it would be considered private. Three, stormwater. The drawings indicate a private stormwater draining into the existing wetland and open drain. The drawings do indicate detention is being provided, but no calculations are included. During permitting, we will be reviewing the process, the proposed system, to ensure that it conforms to the Wayne County stormwater requirements. Also, the developer will need to obtain permits from Eagle for discharging the stormwater system to the wetlands. Three, due to the proximity of the site entrance to the Seven Mile and Victor Parkway intersection, additional signage may be required to prevent vehicles from blocking the northbound Victor Parkway lanes. When exiting the, when exiting the site, excuse me. We would request that the Traffic Commission review the proposed layout and determine any additional signage or turn movements, restrictions that may be needed. The proposed landscape, or four, the proposed landscape plan indicates that the existing trees along Victor Parkway are to be saved. We would like to request that the removal of the existing pine trees on the east side of the roadway as they are not permitted in the right-of-way and are currently outgrowing the greenbelt areas. Also, we would like to request that the developer add additional species of trees off of our approved species list instead of heavy reliance on two species of maples. We would prefer to have four or five varieties of trees to provide more diversity. Five, any disturbances with the Seven Mile Road right-of-way will require permits through the Wayne County Department of Public Service, including driveway approaches and sidewalk removals and placements. Please note, the removals of the existing approaches and replacements of the curbs at the opening will be required for the Seven Mile Road frontage. Signed, David Lear, Assistant City Engineer." From the Fire Marshal's Office, "The office has reviewed the site plan submitted in connection with a site plan to construct a residential building on the property located at the above-referenced address. We have no objections to the proposal with the following stipulations: One, two separate roadways are required for entry and egress into the complex. Alleviates traffic issues involving the entry and egress of multiple emergency vehicles during large-scale incidents. Two, assess and accommodate roadways for turn radius of the fire department's largest fire suppression tower truck, C attached. Three, code will need to be researched and provided by the builder and/or licensed certified architect for the potentially required install of residential sprinklers for townhomes. A further detailed review will take place when the division receives an official plan set. Signed, Brian Kukula." From the Police Department, "I have reviewed the plans in connection with the petition. I have no objections to the proposals." Signed, Paul Walters, Sergeant of the Traffic Bureau. From our Inspection Department, "Pursuant to the request, the above-referenced petition has been reviewed. This department has no objections to this petition." Signed, Jerome Hannah, Director of Inspection. From the Accounting Department, "I have reviewed the address connected with the above-noted petition. As there are no outstanding amounts receivable, I have no objections to the proposal." Signed, Connie Cupola, Chief Accountant. And finally, from the Treasurer's Office, "All taxes are current on this property." Signed, Susan Nash, City Treasurer." Oh, I'm sorry, there is one more. From the Residential Appraiser, "Plans have been submitted by Robertson Brother Homes requesting the site plan approval to construct a residential townhome development, 15 buildings on two parcels at 37640 Seven Mile Road and 19290 Victor Parkway. The Department of Assessment recommends these parcels should be combined. Also, please note that each parcel is under a different ownership. Please direct any questions to the Assessor's Office or livonia.gov for the lot split and combination process." Signed, Kathy Sturtlet.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Yuhasi. Any questions for our planning staff? Mr. Dros?
Mr. Chair, thank you. There was a comment in the Fire Department letter regarding two points of access. Is that, has that been shared with the applicant? Is that something that can be worked out, or is that?
Believe they are having, they've had discussions, and that is something they are working on, but we have not seen updated plans yet. I believe they are aware of it.
Okay, thank you. Nothing further?
Thank you, Mr. Dros. Any other questions for planning staff? If not, if the petitioner is in the audience, feel free to come forward. Good evening, sir.
Good evening, how are you?
Very good, thank you.
Tim Loughran, the Vice President of Land Acquisition for Robertson Brothers Homes. With me tonight is Darian Newbeck, our President, and Jack Flynn, our Land Analyst. We are partnering on the site with Etkin, who's the property owner of the property to the south. And we have under contract the property to the north as well. So I do have a presentation. I'd like to run through it if you would be okay with that. I can answer some of the questions you probably have as well. Already asked some of them, and I think we can answer it if that's okay. So Jacob, I don't know if you have it up?
Yes, just give me one second.
Thank you.
I'll pull the PowerPoint up, and you can walk him through it.
Appreciate it.
He's very good at changing slides at the appropriate moments.
I'm glad I brought a copy up here, because I would not be able to see that.
All right.
Perfect, thank you. Perfect, thank you. So, we're calling the project One Hundred West. We're not all that creative on our projects. There's one hundred units, sort of the west side of the city. The site context, I think everybody's familiar with the site. There's a long history on the project, which Jacob went through some of it. Obviously, Mark has gone through with you as well. I'm not going to get into all the details on that. But just from context and surrounding land uses, it really kind of is a mixed bag. You've got a lot of office, you've got a lot of retail, so you've got daycare, and then you have some residential as well. So, it's sort of a transitional land use between all of those on the property, which we're really excited about. And of course, easy access to I-275 as well. We did have a neighborhood meeting a couple of weeks ago. About twelve people showed up, and we had a pretty good meeting over there at the main library and answered a lot of questions and got to know the group a little bit. We've actually offered to have continual conversations with them as far as neighborly issues, as far as potential screening and things like that. So, the site plan, I know Jacob had gone over it a little bit, but a couple of things I want to point out. There is that single entrance on Victor Parkway, and it's really where the opening is in the median already, so it just made sense to do that. We did not want to have a second access on Seven Mile. I don't think the city wanted it either. I don't think MDOT wants it. There is an existing driveway. There were multiple ones. There's only one existing driveway now. We have had conversations with fire recently, since the study session, and they have preliminary signed off on an emergency vehicle access on Seven Mile where the existing driveway is. So, we'll have those conversations with MDOT to make sure that's still something that's acceptable. We're proposing it as only an emergency vehicle access. So, that would be essentially, just to, you see where Building Seven is, I don't know if you can see it any better than I can, but where Building Seven is, which is the second building from the right, just really south of that, to the west a little bit. That's where that comes in. And then, we've worked with him on the Fire Marshal on access as well for the fire trucks, and it meets that. So, that just happened recently. These units, and I'll get into the floor plans a little bit here, but they are unstacked, so it's not a typical, these are for rent, but it's not your typical apartment. It's not like a garden-style apartment where people are living on top of each other. It's not that at all. They are three-story, but you own basically all three stories. Every unit has a single-car garage or two-car garage. That's part of the unit itself. And then, there's guest parking as well. It does, I do say, 2.34 units are spaces per units, can be a little bit less than that, because we have to remove some spaces for that emergency vehicle access. We would ask, and I know Mark has, I think, put in a condition of approval, that we would continue to work with planning staff on that emergency vehicle access. Obviously, you've got the daycare to the right as well. We're buffered from that. And another thing to really point out is that passive park amended the area. When we first started looking at this and going through the consent judgment amendment process, we did not have that. I think the city had asked us, or the city had asked us, to take a look at that and see if there's something we could acquire. It is buildable to some degree, about, really, the bottom right corner is buildable. Otherwise, there's quite a bit of a buffer to the neighborhood to the north that's required, and then unbuiltable area to the west as part of the consent judgment. There's actually deed restriction. We're proposing, we're not going to build on this at all. So, what you see is what we're showing. It'll be passive park. We might have some kind of light amenities in there, but the purpose really is to have some clarity for our neighbors, have some clarity for us, because we're going to own this as an apartment. We want to make sure there's nothing coming that's objectionable to us to the north as well. So, it just made sense for all the parties involved. So, that's our plan, is to integrate it and just be open space and never be developed. This is a slide that just shows just how far we are really from the neighbors. We showed this in the neighborhood meeting. It's almost five hundred feet from the back of the closest home to where our closest unit is. So, that's obviously quite a bit of distance, plus a lot of green space in between. So, we feel that this is obviously an appropriate buffer to that, and I think a lot of them did appreciate the open space that we're providing to the north of that. And I also show the elevations on it. We do drop quite a bit from where they're at, so they're much higher up. So, we're going to be lower in that respect as it gets down. It really goes from seven fifty-five, you know, it drops about twenty-plus feet, which is pretty significant. This next slide here came about from the study session, and one of the things we thought was a very good suggestion was potentially massaging that corner to see if we can do something with that that makes it more usable, more user-friendly. We have looked at that. We really can't make it work without losing a unit or two, and even losing one unit, and that's what I'm showing on the top right, it's very difficult to do that, just the configuration of it and being able to put all that in there. We had our engineer look at that. We want to keep, we want to continue to still explore this, and I know Mark, I think he put a condition of approval to keep working with planning staff to try to do something similar to that. But again, we may have to pick up a unit or two somewhere else to make that work, or, you know, maybe shift these buildings around. So, we'd ask that we'd be able to work with staff on, you know, potentially doing something like that, because we do think that's a good idea. The bottom part is just to kind of show, there really is screening already on Victor Parkway. I'm not sure if that, one of the comments from engineering was to remove all of that, but we think that's a nice buffer, even if we can't do anything at the corner that blocks that side. So, that's why I took a picture there. There's some pretty mature trees along Victor Parkway existing. I'll go quickly on these slides, because I don't know how relevant it is, other than, again, we have a hodgepodge of different uses. We've got rural neighborhood zoning to the north, but also C4 high commercial. So, it is kind of interesting, the mix in this area. So, again, that just kind of speaks to the transitional use that we're providing. There is a consent judgment on all of the two parcels that we're buying, plus also that daycare was part of the original consent judgment. So, I just wanted to point that out, that that's kind of the reference of the zoning, and then the land use. Next one, please. Again, just shows, right now and future land use is commercial. So, that's obviously more intense than what we're proposing. There's a lot of that around there as well, regional commercial, corridor commercial. The next slide, so I just wanted to get quickly on the summary. It's ten acres, a little bit over ten acres total, again, under ten units per acre. Consent judgment is the zoning. The consent judgment actually was amended for exactly what we're proposing. So, the exact plan, actually. So, this has been vetted out by the city council, but obviously, we wanted to make sure that you, as a planning commission, had the ability to weigh in on certain things, which you did, and we've certainly looked at it. It's kind of a buzzword, missing middle. It is, I think, important. It's something that you don't have much of in your community. As you've matured, it's something that I think is needed in your community. You know, we're actually building the Asian Village in Novi right now. It's a similar type of product that this is, and we just think, we've actually had very successful sale, rents there recently. I think we have our first people moving in this month, and they're really looking for that type of flexibility, but also quality home. It's not a typical apartment. It's really a home that you can rent. They're about thirteen hundred and thirty square feet to about sixteen hundred square feet, and again, that's that one-car and two-car unit attached. And then, open space, we typically don't have sixty-eight percent open space on our projects. It's a lot of open space, and I think it really does kind of fit in well. And it's not just the open space in north. We have the open space, as you saw in the site plan, in between the buildings as well, which creates kind of a gathering area that's been really useful on the projects that we build, the townhome projects. And I mentioned before, the height, three stories and thirty-five feet to the midpoint would be the max. The next slide here just kind of shows some of those things, but I wanted to hit really in housing option. We do think that this is something that Levonia could really use as far as bringing those people in that don't have that type of option or looking for quality housing for rent. But, you know, we'll have screening along Seven Mile, the park amenity is huge, and then the buffer area to the neighboring properties, which I think they do appreciate. The next slide, again, I didn't want to get into history too much, but there's been a lot proposed on this site. You know, obviously, the four-story apartment buildings didn't go for too well, but there's been a lot of proposals on it, and we feel that what we're proposing really is kind of the, I think, the best use as far as trying to learn from the mistakes of the previous plans and provide something that's needed in the community. And I only have a couple more, I swear. Some of the highlights, again, we really, when Etkin and Robertson teamed up on this, we really wanted to study the site and understand what's best for the site. Obviously, the office market just is not there. It's not going to come back probably for a long time. Didn't make sense to do any kind of, you know, industrial type of use. Didn't really feel like a retail site. I think maybe it could then, but we all really kind of felt that this would be the best use for it. It's a walkable inviting community. We've got sidewalks throughout, plus the connection to the north, which is more than we typically do, and I think that that's a great amenity for it. And then, I'll hit on it again, that open space to the north, I think, is a real, you know, shining spot of the proposal. The next slide here, it had come up in the study session, so we had, we've added another color pack, and just so it's not all one color scheme, that's something that I think was important to you. First of all, these colors don't come out great on these renderings, so that's why I have a color of the actual home that we're proposing, which we're building right now in Pittsfield Township in the Ann Arbor School District. You can see that brick is a lot darker and a lot richer, and, you know, comes out a lot better than the pink on the top left. We're showing another color pack to the right there. It's coming out a little bit yellow, but it's more of a gray look, so you've got kind of a, you know, contrast between the red brick and the gray brick, which, you know, I think will be a really good addition to, rather than all the same color scheme, we could introduce that. We can, you know, go from one color to the next color from building to building, if that's something. I think that probably makes the most sense. And then, just quickly on the floor plans, Jacob went over this already, but I think what is important, again, it's, you don't have anybody living on top of each other, and it is very wide open. So, if you come to some of our townhome communities, you'll see, you get up to that second floor and it's just wide open with windows, and that's something people are really looking for in their homes. And then, all of them have the, either two-bedroom or three-bedroom on the third floor. You know, we'll see, we typically, with this type of rental, you'll see anything, anyone from young couples, young professionals, could be singles, could be divorces. We see a lot of age-targeted, if you will, kind of early downsizing couples and anything in between, and we do see families as well, especially in our three bedrooms. So, we think we'll kind of have a spectrum of users in the community that you just wouldn't normally get in just a typical garden-style apartment. So, that's it. The last slide is just the site plan. So, we're happy to be here, happy to take any kind of feedback, but hopefully, you can see, we tried to address some of that, and we're really excited to hopefully get started this year. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Walker. You've certainly covered a lot of information and hopefully answered some of our questions already, although I'm sure we'll have some additional ones of your team. So, let's see if there's any questions for you, Mr. Nero.
Thank you, Chair. You did answer a lot of my questions, but the one question you haven't answered is, what kind of environmental remediation are you doing on the site?
Yeah, so that's a good question. So, we had challenges with the ground itself, the soils itself. There was some environmental contamination, because it was basically a fill location. So, we have gone through the brownfield process for that. In addition, there was some peat we had to deal with, and of course, the fill. So, we have to have some extra deep foundations to handle that. We'll take a lot of it off-site to a Class II landfill, and then, obviously, work with environmental professionals to make sure that, you know, everything's remediated per the brownfield plan, which has been approved.
Great. And Eagle is involved in the remediation?
I'm sorry?
Eagle will be involved?
Oh, of course. Yes, they're involved in the whole process, you know, from the start to finish, so yes.
Thank you.
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Nero. Any other questions of our petitioner, Mr. Long?
Thank you. Thank you for your presentation. You mentioned at the end there kind of your target market of who you plan to market these things to. Can you talk a little bit about the process, the decision process of what made you land on rental units versus condo?
Sure. So, we build more for sale, and we don't own the property. It's Etkin. And, you know, in discussions with them, you know, they really build long-term assets. So, that really was a condition of us getting involved with Etkin on the property. It's something that's important to them, to have a long-term asset. So, we think there's certainly a market for that. We obviously could have gone either way, but as far as the proposal we have here, this is, again, what our partners are looking at as the landowner, and we also feel that there's quite a market there for either, but especially for rentals.
I know that we're still early in the process, but what's the anticipated rental for these units?
Well, probably in the neighborhood of, you know, twenty-one-hundred to twenty-five-hundred. I'm sure by the time we open, it'll be above that, but that's what our best guess is, yes.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Of course, thank you, Mr. Long. Any other questions of our petitioner?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Karen Magno.
Oh, it's the same questions I had earlier. Management of the property. Who will be the overall manager of the property, facilities, upkeep?
Yep, we'll have a third-party management company that we will hire. That's what we're doing with our Novi site, so it's not anything that's atypical in that respect. We don't, Robertson doesn't, we don't do our own management, so we'll have a third-party manager, just like we do on our Novi project.
Who do you use in other projects? Who do you use to manage it?
I'm sorry, KMG.
KMG manages your properties?
Yes.
Okay, they take care of everything A to Z?
Yes, exactly.
The, I don't see any dumpsters, enclosures. What's the plan for garbage and recycling here?
It's a fantastic question. I should have touched on that. So, our townhomes are not like, again, a typical apartment where you would have a dumpster. So, what we do is we have the recycle and trash in each garage, and it's brought out on trash day, just like a single family. So, half the communities we build in, and I don't know what Levonia would do here, half of our communities, the city does provide that service. The other half, the HOA does. So, well, either way, we'll figure that out, but they would be trash and recycle in the garage, and they would take it out on trash day.
Okay, good. Any other amenities outdoors, other than that walkway? Is there anything else you're putting on this property for leisure?
Yeah, so we will vet out those areas in between. We typically do things as far as, you know, having outdoor grills and seating areas and like that, so we will flesh that out more as we get into the final site plan. And then, for the northern section, we're thinking something like maybe a bean toss area, that's something like that, where it's, you know, it's active, but it's not necessarily something that's going to cause any commotion. So, those are the things we're thinking about.
Good, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Karen Magno. Any other questions? Mr. Walker, is this going to be a pet-friendly property as well?
Yeah, that's one of the reasons why we did like the northern section. People could walk their dogs, and that's something that would be very useful for that. We'll probably have pet stations along that. That's something I'm sure we'll end up doing. So, of course, that's something that, again, with this product, you can have that type of, you can have a pet that you can walk, so.
Okay, so you may need to provide a trash can in that area as well?
I'm sure that, yes, and I can certainly put that down as a reminder for our team, yes.
All right, very good. All right, thank you.
Yes.
Any other questions from the commission? If not, I'll go to our audience. Anyone in our audience wishing to speak on this item, either for or against? Feel free to come forward to our podium. And let us know your thoughts. Good evening, sir.
Hi, I'm Rick Rondi. I live at three seven seven nine three Northland, directly behind this project. I mean, I have some concerns with it, but I also understand that, you know, we live in a capitalist society, and they have a right to make a profit with their real estate. I'm not thrilled about a three-story structure behind my house, you know, the added traffic, all these things. But what makes it palatable, frankly, for me, is that they've expressed a willingness to not build between the stream and north of that. My question is, if they're sincere about that, what can be done to ensure that nobody ever builds there? Can there be a deed restriction? Can the city impose something? Because they're developers. They're going to develop this. They could sell it five years from now, and the next guy comes in and looks at it and says, oh, what a nice piece of property. These houses, you know, these apartments worked out good. We'll put, you know, five more buildings in there. So, just wondering what can be done with that process, again, if they're sincere with that.
That's an excellent question, and what we're approving with this petition tonight is a site plan. So, that is the overall plan for the site. If the site plan were to change in terms of any significant alterations, such as adding additional buildings in that area, it would require that they come back to the city requesting an amendment or... an amendment or change to that site plan. So you would see this process occur again publicly if there were any significant changes. It sounds like, from at least the verbal assurances that they made at this meeting, that they don't have that intent to do that, but that's currently the process, and they wouldn't be able to just pop some additional buildings up without us approving them at this stage of the game.
Yeah, I've been living there probably 25 years, and I think this is the fourth or fifth meeting I've come to on that property, so something could be done to keep me from coming to any more meetings. That would be great.
Understood, definitely understood, Mr. Rondi.
All right, well, thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Any other people wishing to speak?
I think there's some...
Certainly, yeah, feel free.
Sorry, Darian Newbecker, President of Robertson Homes. So one of the commitments we made in our neighbor meeting, and actually I've been in direct correspondence with Mark Torino, is we will explore, and we will commit to either revising a deed, we're going to do the simplest way to put a permanent deed restriction in place that doesn't allow us or any future developers. So I want to, bottom line, that that won't happen, and we will commit as part, either through an amendment to the approval, or I just know that I've had those conversations, and we are going to certainly put a deed restriction in place. I just, we're trying to figure out the easiest way, whether we modify the conservation easement or a deed restriction, but there will be something that will not allow this to come back.
Well, we appreciate you making that comment publicly.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. Any other folks in our audience wishing to speak for or against? Go ahead, sir. Good evening again.
Thank you. I'd like to say that the renderings looked very nice, so I'd be in favor of that. One of the questions that I have is, you mentioned in terms of a medium-density property and a number of 14. Does that include the north parcel as well? Like, is it really a higher density? And just because the park is behind it, does that average it out to medium-density?
Let me go to Mr. Ujazi to answer that question. The density is, we rate it in the city, is that taking into account the entire parcel or just the buildable area?
Well, this one, I believe, is taking into the entire parcel, all the parcels owned by the site, so it'd be all to the north as well.
Okay.
Yeah, because it seems like it's kind of cheating the system of having a medium-density if they're building on half of it in higher density, and then having no density over in the northern half.
Understood.
And, I mean, I don't know where exactly to voice this, not on this particular project, but it seems like in the city, they're going in higher and higher density, and I'm opposed to that. I'm opposed to third, three-story high buildings, let alone four-story high buildings. I think the gentleman's comment earlier about, okay, so this is set up now, and then what's to stop somebody from coming in in the future? Not speaking against you personally, but that's exactly what we're talking about, that Livonia Woods property. We have four-story tall apartments, and now they grab the land just south of that in two parcels that's fairly small and skinny, and are going to shoehorn in a couple more four-story apartments. I do not like the direction that the city is going and using these properties for that. These are private properties, I understand, and I know that there's a vision to go forward and, you know, build more of these type of properties for the city, but as far as public properties, I would be very, very against density properties in that manner.
Understood. Thank you for your comments. Hi, good evening, ma'am.
Hi. Vicki Johnson, Jameis in court for almost 52 years, and this city is going to you-know-where. Rentals everywhere, nobody's really investing into the city, a rental, fly-by-night people coming here and there, empty apartments. Might as well put up another drive-through, fast food, or another car wash. Disgusting, just disgusting. And it's not even, it's not even pretty. It kind of looks like a Gulag. Thanks.
Well, thank you for your comments, we appreciate that. Any other folks wishing to speak? Please come forward. Good evening, ma'am.
Diana Babcock, 1-832-0-Glastonbury. I'm in the subdivision right across from where this is going to be, and my concern is traffic, like people coming out of Parkway, Victory Park, going across Seven Mile to miss the Seven Mile traffic. They're cutting through our subdivision, going very fast, and I think that's going to become a problem even worse than it is today.
Okay, thank you for your comments. Good evening, ma'am.
Hi, I'm Diane Oral. I live at 1-9069 Glengarry Drive. I'm the first house across from where they're going to build us. We can't be, we have kids playing in the street, and with that many cars, or that many places being built for apartment rentals, our street's going to become a turnaround. I just don't want to see it. We've got to find something else for that corner and not apartments. The traffic is horrible on Seven Mile. So I'm against it.
Okay, we appreciate those comments.
I'm Tim Oral, I live at the same address, and first off, thank you for getting rid of the house behind me, as you remember from the last incident.
Yes.
I agree with my wife, it is, right now, the traffic's very heavy. The Seven Mile area, right by the, like, a lot of traffic accidents, and probably should do some research, see how many accidents we have. I take 275 to work, and if I don't leave by 6:30, I have a very difficult time turning left. So if we're going to be adding, and I know they're calling it a fire entrance off of Seven Mile, if that's actually going to be a way to the apartments, that's probably going to increase more traffic, more left turns, that's really a big concern, more so than what the planning is to have the apartments there. But I would, I'm also against it, but really, it's, the noise is so bad right now, and then the additional traffic, and I would guess you'd have more accidents on that area. But, I mean, you do what you do, but I'm not as opposed to the apartments as much as I am with the traffic, the noise, and as my wife mentioned, we got a lot of turnarounds.
Okay, yeah, I'm hearing about traffic concerns from multiple residents here. As far as the actual entrance on, you know, directly to Seven Mile, that would, if that was required as part of an emergency entrance for fire vehicles, it would be secured in some way so that it wouldn't be publicly accessible.
Yeah, if it was only that, or if it was an actual entrance into the apartments, that's where, that's part I didn't quite understand.
Right, yeah, I think it's just strictly as an emergency entrance, so it'd be restricted in some way, either a gate or what have you. We'll talk to the petitioner about that.
That, I mean, that's really, eventually, somebody's going to have to do something to that property, we get that. It's just take everything else into consideration, and maybe there's some alternate ways we can reduce the traffic in the north.
Okay, understood. Thank you, sir. Hi, good evening.
Hi, hi, Vicki Oliver, 1-841-4-Glastonbury. It's the subdivision across Seven Mile from the proposed development. And I just want to say, you know, like, when you enter our sub from Seven Mile, there's the partition in the middle. I see so many cars just pull in and turn around and go out because they don't want to make the left-hand turn, or they don't want to, you know, everything's backed up. Coming up Newburgh, I have seen the left turn lane backed up almost to Caliburn to turn left onto Seven Mile. And 100 more homes, residents, are going to make the traffic so much worse. I usually come out Glen, or I usually come out in blue skies if I'm going to turn left because I can't turn left off of Glengarry as it is. And just from my house, to get to Target can take almost 15 minutes sometimes, and you know how far that is from Seven Mile and Victor Parkway to Target is not very far, but between the lights and the traffic all backed up, and now you're putting in yet another restaurant there? I just, just see traffic, traffic nightmare, that's all. And they do, I see the cars also race through our subdivision to avoid Seven Mile and Newburgh.
All right, thank you. Hi, good evening.
John Fitch, 377-73 Northland, directly north of this development. Before I start yelling about how much I don't want it, I would say that I've been talking a lot with the people that are building, they have been trying to work with us, but it's still a three-story-high brick wall you're putting across my backyard. It's been a beautiful nature spot, one of the things that got me there. I'm not a big fan of the design that they're showing for these condos. I mean, down the street, just by the post saw, we've got beautiful condos over there. These look more like my army barracks, and I don't want to pick on them, but I've told them that too, so. Traffic's a big, really big concern, and like they mentioned before, appreciate the fact they plan to keep a green area there, but I don't know how long they'll be there. Buildings get built, they move out, next guy comes in, wants to build, and if that green space is why you're going to approve this, is that going to lock that green space in so that five years from now, when somebody else buys it and wants to build it, you go through this whole thing again? And then tell me, well, now the green space ain't as important as it was when you approved this? So, you know, I think we got way too much traffic over there, but I understand we're going to build something. I'd prefer if it was real condos and not rentals, because to me, that just looks like an apartment building, and I'm going to be looking at it from now on instead of what I'm looking at now. Thank you.
Very good, thank you, sir. Anyone else wishing to speak? Hi, good evening, sir.
Hello, I'm Dave Osman. I live in the Caliburn Manor subdivision as well, right across from this facility. Traffic, as everybody has said, is probably our biggest concern. Right now, at certain times, rush hour, morning, evening, that Seven Mile is crazy. And now, in addition to what you guys are, or what is being proposed, at the other end of our sub, we have all the pre-K traffic as well, they just put that in. So there is this conversion of different traffic problems that are going to be huge for us. I mean, we bought these houses to live and enjoy, okay, and if you have to just, you know, try to get in and out of your sub in traffic, it's just not fun anymore. It's just not a place to be. Livonia is an amazing community, and we want to keep it that way. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Osman. Anyone else wishing to speak?
I'm also concerned about our property values.
Ma'am, could we ask you, just come to the microphone to speak, just so that we can get your comments on the record? We do have a vast TV audience that would like to hear you as well. Usually about three to five people watching. Good evening.
I'm Anne Santell, I live at 18325 Glastonbury, and I'm on the corner of the intersection where people are shortcutting through, and the traffic in the two years I've been there has probably tripled already. And to think of another 100 families moving in and using it and abusing it is just deplorable. I'm concerned about our property values being devalued, which is going to affect the income for the city long-term. So I feel like that is just a terrible use of our, of the land.
Okay, well, thank you for coming up and giving your comments. Anyone else wishing to speak? I think that covers everybody, thank you for those comments, and I'm going to ask that Mr. Walker come back if he would like to address any of the items that were raised, especially regarding traffic concerns, which is certainly one of the primary concerns, I think, that we've heard this evening.
Yeah, of course, and I appreciate the opportunity, so, and I appreciate all the comments. You know, obviously, something's going to be built there, and it's just at a corner of a major intersection along a busy commercial corridor. So no matter what, something will happen that will generate traffic. You're not going to have everybody rushing at the exact same time, people at different schedules and that sort of thing. And we did have, obviously, a traffic study done, so I understand, change is always, you know, hard, it's part of what we do, we try to mitigate it as best we can. So that's what I would say to that, something's going to happen there. As far as the homes themselves, these are the exact same as we build for for sale. It is, it's just of a rental nature. And again, it's not your typical renter. It really is somebody that's looking to be in your community, but maybe not, you know, invest for the 10-year period. It might be there four or five years, they don't want to get kind of saddled with a mortgage. So, you know, from a, we don't have a history of coming in and bringing down home values. Typically, values, home values go up when we build, because that's showing new investment. It's a big investment, right? It's a $30 million investment in your community. So, you know, from that standpoint, I don't believe values will go down. So I know those were kind of the biggest ones, I hear the comments about design, again, this is something that we build for sale, you know, those homes usually are in the 350, 400,000-plus. So it is, it is a high-quality product, and it's something that does belong. This isn't smack dab in the middle of a neighborhood, this is on a major roadway. So I'm happy to answer any other ones that maybe I missed. Just to reiterate what Darian said, we will not build on that northern section, we will have a deed restriction, we will go out of our way to make sure that there's something in place, that you will have comfort, that nothing will ever happen there. So I guarantee that, and it'll be something on the record now, that we will make sure, you will make sure we do before final approval. So if there's any other thing that I missed, please, please let me know.
I do think the land use to the north was definitely a big concern, and I appreciate the fact that you're committing to purchase that property, which you didn't have to do as part of this process, but you are, and then essentially restricting it, limiting it to its proposed use of an open park area. There is, as part of the consent judgment, a requirement that a certain amount of feet of that property remain open space regardless of what happens, but you're taking that significantly further by locking that property in, so I do appreciate that comment.
Thank you.
I think that covers everything at this point. Is there any questions or comments from any of the commissioners for Mr. Walker before we make our decision? Okay, no additional comments or questions? If not, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
A motion would be in order.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Ventura.
Going to offer an approving resolution. Request to develop a multifamily townhouse complex consisting of 15 buildings and 104 leased dwelling units on the properties at 37640 Seven Mile Road and 19290 Victor Parkway is hereby approved, subject to City Council approval, and the following conditions. Number one, the preliminary site plan identified as Sheet P-2 dated February 12, 2025, prepared by PEA Group, is hereby approved and shall be adhered to. Consistent with a fourth amendment to the consent judgment between the City of Livonia and Victor East LLC, except that minor deviations are allowed in the size and placement of the buildings to improve circulation and to provide additional site amenities, subject to the approval of the Planning Commission. Number two, the petitioner shall work with the Fire Marshal to provide secondary emergency access to the development. Number three, the overall landscape plan identified as Sheet L-1 dated February 10, 2025, prepared by Land Design Studio, is hereby approved and shall be adhered to. Number four... four, all disturbed lawn areas, including road rights of way, shall be sotted instead of hydroseeding. Number five, underground irrigation shall be provided for all landscaped and sowed areas, and all plant material, planted materials shall be installed to the satisfaction of the Inspection Department and thereafter permanently maintained in a healthy condition. Number six, all parking areas except the required handicap spaces must be double striped and 10 feet wide. Number seven, the exterior building elevation plans identified as sheet numbers A3, A6, A7, A9, and A11, prepared by Brian Nipperus Architecture PC, are hereby approved, and with an allowance of color variations to the brick and siding materials and other minor elevation details to provide greater variation in the appearance of the buildings. Number eight, the maximum height of any pole-mounted light fixture shall be 16 feet, and shall be located and shielded to prevent light trespass and glare on adjacent properties. Number nine, the exterior walls of any trash enclosures added to the site shall be constructed out of the same brick used in construction of the buildings, and the enclosure gate shall consist of solid panel steel, durable, long-lasting solid pan- solid panel fiberglass. Number 10, under section 13 dot 1.3 of Livonia zoning ordinance, this approval is valid for one year only from the date of approval by the City Council. Unless a building permit is obtained, this approval shall be null and void at the expiration of said period.
Is there support?
Support.
We have a motion by Mr. Ventura, supported by Mr. Droes. Is there any discussion on the motion? If there's no discussion, if the secretary's ready, please call the roll.
Mr. Ventura?
Aye.
Mr. Droes?
Aye.
Mrs. D'Naro?
Aye.
Mr. Long?
No.
Karen Magnow votes aye. Chairman Wilshire?
Votes aye. Motion passes. We'll go to City Council on approving a recommendation. If, uh, our residents that are here would like to continue to follow this item, uh, again, this will go to City Council for approval, so you can attend that meeting, and we'll have an opportunity to speak at that meeting as well. So, thank you for coming, and thank you, uh, good luck on your project. We have one item left on our agenda. Approval of minutes?
Approval of the minutes of the 1,226th Public Hearing, a regular meeting held by the Planning Commission on February 25th, 2025.
All members of the commission were present, with the exception of Mr. Caremagnow and Mr. Ventura. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
And that's by D'Naro. Is there support?
Support.
Mr. Long? If there's no objection, I think we can safely show four. See no objections on that? Okay, we'll show four on that, with Mr. Caremagnow and Mr. Ventura abstaining. Uh, that takes us to the end of our meeting. Is there any other business to come before the commission? If not, a motion to adjourn is in order.
So moved.
By Ms. D'Naro, and supported by?
Support.
Mr. Ventura. Again, if there's no objection, I think we can show six on motion to adjourn. I see no objections. Uh, we will adjourn the meeting tonight at 9:13 PM. I do wanna thank Livonia Television staff for bringing this meeting to our community, and wish a good night to City Livonia.